Father, in the name of Jesus, we pause right now to say thank you. Thank you, Father, for an opportunity for board members to reflect, to think, and to process programs that are being performed and services that are given in our district that will give our students a better opportunity to compete. God, we thank you for that, that we're able to do that. Thank you for our parents that are supportive of their children, that encourage them to go and to do their very best and behave. Thank you, God, for the coaches that go beyond what the stipend gives them and give of themselves. Thank you, oh God, for the opportunity to live in a district where we truly care about our neighbor and not just care about, but, God, we reach out and we help one another. Thank you, God, for all of these gifts. Now, God, as we conduct the business of this board, we pray for your divine guidance. We thank you again for the opportunity to serve. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus. And the people say amen?
Amen.
At this time, we're, yes, we're going to ask Superintendent Rick Serency if he would share with those of you here this afternoon an update on the coronavirus and what we're doing as a district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I do that, I want to present some happy news first, and I wanted to do this out of order, and this is a surprise, but I understand that Coach Ron Whitehurst is in the crowd. He's here with some of his athletes, but I want to catch him because I heard he has to leave as soon as possible for a game. Is that true? So I want to catch him first, and I'm going to call him up here and embarrass him, but he is well deserved. If I want to recognize-
He's saying no, but he better come.
...this 200th win as a coach of the New York softball team.
Go coach! All right. He doesn't like it. Look at him. He doesn't like it.
Aw, look at him. Go coach! Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Let me get in. Ron, Ron will like it better.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ron.
He's going to talk about you, Ron. We want to leave you up here.
You want us to do a sweet surrender?
Oh, come on.
Thank you, Ron.
Well deserved. Thank you.
I want to get that out of the way because I know Ron has to be somewhere right after the other presentation. I do want to take a minute on a more serious note. You know, kind of the big thing that people are talking about is what is Putnam County doing about the coronavirus? And of course, this is something that is affecting our entire nation, entire world. So my main mission today is to make sure that our citizens know, not only in this room, but around our district, that the Putnam County School District is being very proactive to make sure our children are safe and our staff are safe. And we have enacted some things, put some things in place, just to ensure that we are doing everything possible and working closely with the Health Department to do so. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to play a short video that we shot yesterday, and y'all will be the first to see it. And we'll be posting this on our Facebook and on our website, and also sending it out to all the principals to play for those who need to see it at the schools. And then right after the video, I've asked Mr. Bowling, who is actually, I've asked him to be the contact person to work with the Health Department and really be the lead person in our effort to battle the coronavirus. He's going to come up here and answer any questions, and then he's going to be on a state conference call at 4:00 PM. So that's why I've asked that we do this first.
Yes.
So if you would, we'll go ahead and roll the video. Hi, this is Superintendent Rick Serency. I want to take a few minutes and talk about some of the steps that our school district has taken to ensure the safety of our students and our staff related to the recent coronavirus outbreak. The Putnam County School District remains in close communication with the Florida Department of Health and our local Health Department in order to keep the public informed. We ask that all parents and guardians call their schools if anyone in their household has traveled overseas or to a high-risk area. Please contact your child's school by phone before returning to the campus. Upon notification, schools will work with district and community health officials to determine the appropriate action regarding re-entry of those children into the school. Any new families arriving to Putnam County from overseas or high-risk areas are also requested to call the school for instructions prior to registration. We are in the process of sanitizing and disinfecting all of our schools against the coronavirus. The district is prepared to deploy a deep and concentrated sanitizing procedure immediately to a school or district facility determined to be potentially exposed to the coronavirus. Disinfecting wipes are being distributed to all schools, and schools have been advised to ensure adequate supply of soap and paper towels for student and employee use. In regards to school attendance, students who provide written documentation from their healthcare provider advising them to refrain from school due to the coronavirus will receive accommodations. Families of these students are asked to call their schools. For all other students, normal school attendance policies remain in effect. The district is prepared to make school-by-school decisions with guidance from state and local health officials as necessary. Students and employees who are ill will not be permitted to travel on school-sponsored trips. Prior to traveling, students and employees will be made aware that if they become ill during the course of travel, they may not be allowed to return via public transportation if the transporting authority makes a determination that the individual poses a risk to others being transported. The district is proceeding with caution, and all school-sponsored travel within the state must be approved by one of our area directors or an assistant superintendent. Trips requiring air travel, events held in closed spaces, or events with 1,000 or more participants will be carefully considered on an individual basis. We are currently working with the Florida High School Athletics Association regarding regional and state athletic events, and will provide guidance to schools once that information is received. Currently, planned non-refundable out-of-state travel may be allowed if a trip is to an area which is not a high-risk area. If an employee or student is not comfortable traveling, those individuals will be excused from the event, and every effort will be made to excuse any financial penalty for non-attendance. Refundable out-of-state travel will be reviewed by district administration to determine if the travel is permissible. Until further notice, new out-of-state travel will not be approved. Regarding travel to high-risk areas, any school-sponsored or district-sponsored travel will be canceled. We will work with families to pursue refunds if possible. For more information regarding the coronavirus, you can call the Florida Department of Health Coronavirus Hotline at 1-866-779-6121. Thank you and have a good day.
I just want to reiterate that we're working very carefully with the EOC and the Putnam County Health Department, who is working very closely with the state Health Department to make decisions concerning all of our governmental entities, including public schools. The superintendent nor myself have the authority, basically, or he may have the authority in conjunction with the school board. I'm not too sure on that legally, but we don't close schools for health reasons. The Health Department does. So that determination will be made by them, and I'm in contact with them at least three or four times a day. I've probably spoken to Kenna Foster from the Health Department five or six times today. So anytime we have a question regarding any student or family that's coming to the district, the first thing we do is reach out to them and make them aware. I also want to remind everyone, I think the superintendent, I'm sorry, superintendent mentioned it on the video, but it needs to be said often. If you have any question concerning travel, whether you're wanting to go somewhere or whether you're coming back from somewhere, or you're related to someone closely who's done either, or you have someone in your school that's sick, don't show up to the front office and say, "What do I do next?" Call first, because if you show up in that front office, you've already contaminated everybody that's in that front office. So very important, pick up the phone and call, and then that school will either redirect you to call back, or call the Health Department, or they'll take some time and call you back. And then we'll also have signs posted outside of the schools to that very effect. Once again, don't forget, go on our school website. As a matter of fact, if you go right down, well, there it is, right there. That's the homepage of our website. If you click that first link in red, right up under coronavirus, that takes you to the state's up-to-date information. Actually, that's Putnam County School District's information. Yeah, I wanted the states first, but as you can see, ours is under construction, but it will be live today. The man that's operating that laptop reassured me that all he has to do is just go in his office and do a few things, and magically it will appear. But that is, that's the real-time information for the state of Florida right there.
Thomas, when you have your workshop or your phone call today, I mean, a lot of this has been over-politicized in the paper and the national news, and it is a serious thing to look at, but there have been instances in the past when we have canceled schools for health reasons.
Meningitis.
Meningitis outbreak, when we had to vaccinate several thousand students at Palaca High. So it would not be an uncommon thing for us to do. I know we worked in conjunction at the time with the Health Department. You and the superintendent were, you know, busy in the schools, and you helped a lot with that, but I would think that the board attorney could tell you that if the superintendent declared it a state of emergency for whatever reason he deemed to be appropriate, it could probably be canceled, but I don't, I don't anticipate that happening without close working with the Health Department, because that's kind of your go-to with the EOC and all.
Right. And I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but we've kind of already predetermined we're not going to make those kind of calls.
Right, right.
And I mean, if it happens, it'll be made at the EOC-
That's correct.
-and it won't be just the superintendent and myself-
We would need to-
-or Ann Kenna, but also the sheriff and other members who are on that planning committee.
Yeah, we have that committee that makes that joint decision.
Just having you, you heading it up for the superintendent makes me feel better, so that's-
But the reassuring part of it is making sure that our parents hear what was said. If you're sick, feeling sick, as opposed to going to the school, call, and we would prefer that.
Well, we're asking for six students to please stay home.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and we're reviewing our attendance policies, and things of that nature can and probably will be relaxed as we go forward.
Yeah.
But in the here and now, if you're sick, please stay home.
And then the washing of the hands is going to be so crucial, things that they may have haphazardly or quickly done. You got to really take all of those seriously, and I think because we have a plan, we're in good shape. And you just work the plan.
I know that you'll be in contact with health officials in the county, but all that phone call, if you could find out if they have an outbreak in Marion County, are they going to recommend Putnam County shutdown or something like that? I just was kind of curious.
And I've been on the phone with at least a couple of our neighboring superintendents already, so we're almost like a hurricane. We talk to each other and just kind of coordinate.
Not, it's not uncommon, but it is for us because we haven't done it in a while. Okay.
Okay.
And I appreciate what Mr. Bowlen's doing.
Any questions from anyone out here? Any questions?
Got one in the back right here.
Yes.
Okay, just talking about shutting down. But when, if it does, and when you do shut down, if you do, is virtual school open? Do you have enough to accommodate all the students for virtual school? And has every one of the teachers that are already in place with students had the equipment in order for them to stay with the student that wants to stay with them?
I hope that's not myself on.
It would probably be a make-up day. I mean, the state would probably allow make-up days. I don't, I don't know that.
Pretty much like we would in a hurricane.
Well, we have asked that question, that very question, and I'm glad you brought it up. And the question is, if we do a virtual school, does it count as seat time? Because in grades four through 12, there has, they have so many hours they have to actually be in instruction, and right now, that is yet to be determined. So we are not going to have our students go through all this virtual if they're not going to get credit for it. So like Mr. Buckle said, we would, in that case, if they don't allow that to be counted as seat time, then there would be, you know, make-up days or make-up time that we would have to determine at a later date. But we're going to make sure that kids have the opportunity to make up that time.
And to speak to the capability, yes, ma'am, we do have the hardware and the infrastructure to accomplish that if that becomes an option.
And that's short-term, but what about the long-term? If they have to, like they did in China, shut down for a month?
Well, that's something we'll just have to make a determination, working with our state, because this would be a state issue too.
It wouldn't just be Putnam County. It'd probably go statewide if that happened.
But the main thing is, we want to make sure our students are given credit for the work they actually do.
And one of the things I've heard on the news is, they're asking people that if you're sick, don't go places, sort of like self-quarantine, but a state issue. If there's a breakout, like Mr. Buckle's concerned about Marion County, which is one of our neighboring counties, surely, you know, we want to hear if someone is affected and they've traveled here. So we'll, like they're saying, we're going to play it by ear, but we're going to have things in place that would keep us moving as much as possible without lag time.
And I want to excuse Mr. Bowlen, because he needs to be on that call. Miss, I think Ms. Cormany's going to key up the call for you in the conference room. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bowlen.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlen. Thank you.
And if you'll come back later, Mr. Bowlen, after the call, just in case there's any further updates. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. At this time, we will have the recognition of the Putnam County School students that competed in state championships.
All right.
And I think Ms. France, are you going to come narrate or facilitate?
Just a second.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to do the weightlifters first, so he can go to the games.
Okay.
Ron, who you, who y'all playing tonight?
Hugh Holt.
Who?
Hugh Holt.
Hugh Holt, okay.
So we actually listed it as several groups, and so we're going to start with the weightlifters, and I'm going to ask Mr. Whitehurst to come out and to introduce the three weightlifters that we had that went to state competitions.
I can do all of them.
I have to, Ron, I have to compliment you on how well your girls played the other day at the Palaca High Tournament, and that was, they were awesome. I thought that was a very good game.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Fine kids. We had three girls actually represented from Putnam County. We had one from each one of the schools in the county. I do not see Jordan Williams from Crescent City. We had Emma Cole from Palaca and Marissa McKibben from Interlochen. Just, I thought, we thought one thing that was very cool about this is all three of them are siblings, are children of teachers or parapros at our school, so I thought that was kind of neat. And they competed. Emma came in 10th in the 154-pound class. What's she in, 150, 150? What was your two?
It was 100.
300, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
300.
Yeah. She had a 150 bench press and a 150 clean and jerk for 300 total to give her 10th place.
Hey!
And she is a senior this year. Jordan Williams was in a 183-pound class. I do not remember her totals. And she's a junior, and she'll be coming back. And then Marissa McKibben from Interlochen, bench press 195 pounds, clean and jerk 155 pounds, and she's just a sophomore, so.
Hey!
She goes there.
And both of them were very close to meddling. They were within five or 10 pounds of being in a medal. That's how close they were.
That's wonderful.
But it takes a lot of hard work, and we appreciate y'all recognizing them. And y'all better be glad you didn't tell me you were going to recognize me, because I wouldn't have came.
I saw it.
You know I'm not going to.
I'm going to have them bring you back, and we're going to have you say a few words.
Take a picture with them?
Okay.
I can remember when Coach Polite could bench press 100 pounds. That was something.
That's why we had to come up here.
Everybody look this way. One, two, three.
All right, guys, all three. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Don't break her. Don't break her, Darryl.
Hi, Darryl.
Darryl, when you going to cook again?
All right, so those are our recognition of our athletics that were in the state competitions. We now are going to recognize three different groups that went to state competitions for academic in nature things. So I'm going to start with Palaca High School's Robo Panthers, and I will let Micah come on up.
So about two weeks ago, we just got back from the state competition for the first tech challenge, which is a robotics competition. Each year, we have a different challenge, so we have to design a different robot. And this year, the challenge was stacking these large Lego block-type things onto a There's a few other things involved in the competition, but the main point of this year was that stacking element. So we had to, as far as the actual robot goes, we get a kit of parts called Tetrix, and it's just, it's all apart, and we have to design and build that entirely from scratch.
You made that thing?
So all the metal, the metal pieces are all apart?
Those metal pieces come in a kit together, and we screw them together and design what we need, and we insert motors, and it's controlled via a Android smartphone, which is connected to another phone wired to a controller. And we also had to program it fully from scratch as well. And so all the movement that we're doing, as well as in autonomous mode, is also pre-programmed.
Wow.
Those are mud bogging tires it has on there.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Well, not exactly. Those are actually a special kind of tire called Meccanum wheels, which allow us to strafe from side to side. Go ahead and demonstrate that functionality.
Oh. Wow.
And now I'm going to let Colby talk about some of the robot design.
So this is actually our new robot that we literally built in two weeks before state. This robot up on the TV is actually our old robot. When we got the districts, that robot was slow, didn't really, wasn't able to do much. But a team picked us, and we were able to get in the final alliance, and we were able to go to state. So what we did immediately, destroyed that robot, made this robot. That took about three, three or four months to build. That took two weeks.
But that's how, that's how you learn from this stuff, and what you've done, they'll be spinoffs by someone at some level to make, make life easier and to create more jobs and ways to do things. That's fantastic.
Like Micah said earlier, with these new fancy wheels we have, it allows us to strafe, which is basically moving left to right, as you see in the video here, without having to rotate the robot. And if you, like me, would like to try.
Wow. Yeah.
That is amazing.
Now, as the robot is coming to the wall, it stops right there. What we're doing right there is we have four distance sensors all the way around the robot. And we set these parameters, so basically whenever a distance sensor gets to a certain distance from an object or away from a certain distance, it will actually execute a command. And what we did there was, as soon as we got roughly about 12 inches from the wall, we would stop and go forward.
Superintendent, I, I would think that if it, if we had the technological support, maybe we could video these guys demonstrating their project and then run it on the local channel.
Sure, good. Yeah.
You know, this is, this is groundbreaking stuff now. It's already done more work than Ms. Crawford has all day.
Poor Micah can't get a word in edgewise.
Go ahead, son. I had to say.
As another part of our presentation, we also have a promotional video we prepared this year to enter into, enter for an award.
They were showing me this stuff and how you were able to design it, and it was programmed, and I thought that was really cool, and I've never made a moving 18 by 18 by 18 robot that actually picked things up and all sorts of crazy things. So it was a completely new experience, us actually getting motors to do what you want them to do. It's really opened my mind to what that has to offer, because before I was like, okay, I've played with Legos, but this is a lot more fun.
This group means to me it is a place I can always come to and they will always be.
When I got really started was the idea of wanting on something that's taking us to the future.
This sort of stuff, it's my future. It's everybody's future, really.
A lot of people think that they're not able to do something whenever they really are.
I want to see them throw that thing at Bud.
Is Mr. Knutson or Mr. Knutson? Y'all have any comments you want to make before we recognize you?
David, I'm surprised you don't have lean in.
Come on up to the mic, if you would.
We're presenting you to a pin we printed on our 3D printer.
Oh, cool.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
They're Panther heads. And we have, we were able to mainly go to the state just because of these students' hard work. These students' hard work. They totally rebuilt the robot in two weeks. That's a lot of work. They just go into it and build it fast, and as you can see, it's a quality robot. And I've always, they work hard, and they're, they're really a great group too.
We need to get some girls in there.
The guys, the guys have been voting for that.
Well, can we have the guys come up and take a photo?
Great job.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Hey! Great job.
Does it have a name?
Does the robot have a name?
I believe that we named it Shelley this year.
It's got to be related to Ms. Gileard.
There's the girl, yeah.
There's a girl, yeah.
I'd have named it, I'd have named it Bubbles. Thanks for helping the kids.
So that was our high school team from Palaca High School, and I would like to now honor and have Melrose Star Horses come up. They are our elementary team that went to state competition this year.
Wow. All right. Here's some girls. Yeah. There's our girls. Oh, my goodness.
Oh!
How adorable.
Erin Crawford.
All right, so my name is Mrs. Mullen. I am the STEM parent at Melrose Elementary, and I also help coach the robotics club along with Mr. Collins, one of our parent volunteers. I am super proud of this group this year. We're, you know, a fairly newer team, and honestly, before this year, I didn't know anything about Lego Robotics. Luckily, we had a couple members from last year's team that they were able to teach me how to do everything, teach each other how to do everything, and we all learned together this year. And it's really amazing that we were able to make it all the way up to regionals. So I'm going to let the kids share their experiences with the championship this year. So go ahead, Jamie.
It was kind of-
Um, and it's really amazing that we were able to make it all the way up to regionals. So I'm gonna let the kids share their experiences with the, with the experience of this year. So go ahead, Jamie.
It was kind of... It was kind of like, it was fun and it was nerve wracking. So, it was fun because I got to hang out with all these, like, good people and we, we were able to make it to districts because of our, um, bond that we have. And if we didn't have that, we'd probably get nowhere. And it was nerve wracking because we, at the competition, we were practicing and our robot fell off the table. And it broke. But we were able to fix it with one of the team members that wasn't able to make it. And while we were doing a practice round, it completely, like, shut off. So, it was very nerve wracking.
Yeah. Hung in there.
We fixed the robot by having our builder come up and we only had 15 minutes to our next round. But we seemed to fix it and it was working better than it did before. And that was our best round and we scored 245 points. And with our programming, it stopped working in the, in the middle of the year. So we had to redo it on one of our programs. But we worked as a team and thought who could fix it the best on our team. And we got our programmer to do it, our best one. And he fixed it and now it works every time.
That's wonderful.
Okay, um, this year, uh, I was...
Get it right there, your mouth. We wanna hear you good.
I was, like, I came in last year, but I didn't do any competitions. This year was a really great experience for me. I loved doing this. It was so much fun and I think the funnest part was cheering everybody on while they were at the table. Because we were just all in it and motivational. It was just great. That looks good. So, we did, um, like in core values, this was way different for me because it was my first year ever being in robotics this year. And we did core values, um, robot design, and we also did, what was it? Innovation project. And our innovation project was about, like, um, getting people to stop speeding because speeding mostly causes crashes. And we built, like, well, we thought of an idea, like, where you could, um, modify sun pass areas and get it to where it could track your speed and send it to local police. So...
Don't do that. Don't do that to me.
So if you were speeding, like, quite over the speed limit, uh, you could get caught.
You're fine. You will save somebody's life with that technology.
Probably.
I get my five miles of grace.
And core values was, um, exciting. Okay, you wanna talk about core values? Fun, you can do that.
So core values. So when we first came to the competition, we were doing things together as a team. Like, in the beginning of the competition, of the event, we had a scavenger hunt that we completed together. And, um, all of our activities, if, or we mainly completed things together as a team. And...
Erin, I noticed you almost bit that ball a time or two. She almost had that. That was really good. Okay.
I enjoyed the socializing the best. Because, because, um, I just have a thing where, and, um, I, I like to collect things, like buttons and things. Like, I even have the, um, the Panthers ones. And, um, I even went to the other side with, um, like, the bigger kids to go, like... Cause, um, cause I like to... And, um, talk and mingle with people, like, meet new people and things like that. And I liked, um, when, um, when we did our, um, the qualifier, um, we, uh, we, um... Okay, sorry.
The qualifier, you have to get that little ball in your mouth real quick.
At the qualifier, we were, um, touching the, we were like, doing the, we were doing a practice round. And, um, I like how we, like, take turns with the practice table because, like, sharing is caring. And, um, yeah, basically.
Thank you, Erin. All those pins she collected at the championship by going to all the different teams that were competing. So every one of those represents a different team that she actually reached out to and spoke with. So, that was pretty fun.
Social butterfly. She's adorable.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Congratulations, Star Horse.
Yes, y'all are amazing.
There you go, Nolan.
Alright, everybody look this way. One, two, three.
Alright guys, on three. One, two, three.
Thank y'all for coming into the big city of Palaca.
I wanna thank the groups for coming, but I also wanna thank Susan Gaborio, who's in the back of the room. And I've had the pleasure of introducing both of those teams. But Susan is really the one who heads up and coordinates all of the teams at the elementary and middle schools. And we appreciate her support that she does to get all of it going in the right direction in Putnam County.
Actually, uh, Ms. Crawford had a great idea, if you wanna mention that about one.
Well, I just wondered if the two groups ever got to work together. I know they would be great mentors for this younger group. That'd be awesome.
We actually had their team go on clockwork Thursday night, or Thursday night, and so the team there was able to do it.
You see our Robo Panthers, they, they were at the fly-in a couple of weeks ago. They actually are out and about trying to promote robotics in Putnam County.
Awesome.
So our last group actually held the state competition at their school. And I would like for Mr. Lewandowski to come up and Mr. Theobald for QI Roberts Drone Team.
I'm gonna let my student speak first.
Thanks a lot. He said, "Thank you." Thank you very much.
So, I'm Justin Tillis. I am the chief engineer and lead pilot of the drone team. Um, we went to competition last year down at Panama City and it went rather well. We took second place. So that went great. We learned a lot. And this year, we're doing pretty well. This year, the competition will be held at our school.
Awesome. And when will that be?
April 25th.
Is that an all-day thing?
Yes, registration will start at 7:30 in the morning and the final award ceremony will be somewhere between 4:00 and 4:30 probably. Um, there are seven teams from around the state that are competing. We, last year, we had three girls on the team, uh, six members total. This year, we have five on the team. We have one girl. And, uh, there are tennis matches and they're here and there, so only Justin can be with me. I wanna share with you that, um, this is really an experience for our, our kids. Besides the fact that they have to build this thousand dollar drone from scratch, alright? They're on a weekly teleconference with MIT. Okay? The, the, the technical expert is an engineer out of MIT. And, uh, Thursday at 4 o'clock, Justin and my other engineers will be on teleconference with him, h- helping build their drone. And, uh, like, just last week, we figured out that they had a bad electronic speed controller. You know, before this, nobody even knew what an electronic speed controller was, you know? And so, uh, through the engineer and through my engineers', uh, work, they figured it out. And FedEx and yesterday morning, new speed controllers came in. And, and within 12 hours, less than 12 hours, my team was putting the new speed controllers on the drone. And so, uh, what they're being exposed to is just fabulous here. It's just fabulous. Um, and, and I'll add that they have a second opportunity besides the, what's called the ARC, the Aerospace Robotics Competition, which is a state competition. Because of our association with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, we've also been invited to participate in the University Drone Olympics. And so on April 4th, we're going down to Embry-Riddle and we're participating. And, um, if it's okay with the board here, there's one in particular, uh, team, there's four events in the Olympics, one event that is very unique. It's called swarming. And it's three drones for three minutes dancing to music.
I'd like to see that.
Yes, very cool. And so, um, uh, maybe at some future board meeting after our competition, we can bring those students in and, uh, we can show you our, our synchronized swimming with drones.
I saw Mr. Theobald swarming in a...
You know, the visual of you two in swimsuits is not good.
Colonel Lewandowski, could you take just a minute, just on a side note, and, uh, just briefly mention about the chief science officers and what they did recently?
With pleasure. So thanks to the, the school board, school district, um, Putnam County has led the state of Florida in this program called the Chief Science Officer Program. And what is it? I liken it to how FFA is to agriculture, CSO is to STEM. And the program started five years ago in Arizona through state funding in Arizona. And it has now expanded to three foreign countries and some nine states. And it's expanding even more. And it was introduced in October after extensive research by Dr. Coleman and, uh, working for her Marsha Cruz. Um, they traveled and they figured it all out. And then at the University of North Florida, there was training that took place. And out of the original 34 student CSOs, it's either 16, 17, or 18 of them. Basically, half of them were from Putnam County. Okay? And so, so we really led the way on this. Um, and they were all certified and then they created STEM plans for their schools and have been implementing science, technology, engineering, and math programs at their schools. Um, we were fortunate that, uh, Mr. Theobald selected two very strong students. These students have now become the only two students in the state of Florida to sit on the Florida Leadership Council. The rest of the members are, are adult leaders in the STEM community.
Who are they?
Okay, yes, um, Joanna Kite and Cole Smith are the two leaders. And they're so strong that when the second training occurred in Florida, which was last month, February, our two students at QI Roberts were asked to come lead the training. Okay, this is a student-led effort, just like with FFA, how they try to instill leadership. Same thing with the CSO program. So Cole and Drew went and they led the training. And they did such a great job with that. I mean, I'm so proud of these students. They have now been invited to Arizona in June to spend seven days there and go through the second level training with the other states and international partners. Alright, so I fully expect that they will be invited to the Third Annual International CSO Convention. Last year took place in Washington DC. I think the same thing will probably happen in the next year. But, um, Putnam County, uh, you, you guys are doing awesome.
You wanna mention about their Tallahassee trip?
Awesome, okay. So, um, once a year, the Orlando Science Center runs a STEM Day at the Capitol in Tallahassee. And they invite schools, museums, science centers to come present. And so, we were, um, we, we said, "Let's go. Let's be part of this STEM. We're doing STEM stuff. We have CSOs." But we figured the first time, we should go observe, not have an exhibit. So we went up there and we decided to kill two birds with one stone. Um, the second is, as of April 1 of last year, the state of Florida has a chief science officer. Dr. Thomas Fraser is the science officer, the chief science officer for the state of Florida. And we said, "Well, we're chief science officers. He's a chief science officer. Let's go meet him." So we did. Dr. Searcy came up with us, um, uh, and we went to the STEM Day and we checked out the exhibits. And now we have a big idea what we're gonna do next year, when we actually go set up an exhibit. And then when that was all done, we went over to Dr. Fraser's office. Well, before that, we got to meet with, uh, Representative Bobby Payne. He invited us up to his office and, uh, he was so kind, uh, made the students feel welcome and we got a picture. And so that was really good for us too. And then we went over to Dr. Fraser's office. We had a 12-slide presentation and the students pre-did the whole presentation. Students did everything. Uh, Dr. Searcy and I just, we just sat there and watched them, uh, impress Dr. Fraser. In front of Dr. Fraser, part of his job every now and then brings him down to Palaca for the St. John's River Water Management District. Because part of being the chief science officer has to do with water science. And he said, "Every now and then, I come down to Palaca." And we said, "You need to come by QI Roberts." And you know what he said? "I need to come by QI Roberts." So we might actually see him.
He would on 100.
Yeah, he goes, he says, "You know what? I think I drive by your school." I said, "Yes, you do."
Very good. Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
Let's get a picture.
Can't wait to see Mr. Theobald do that swarm dance again. Wonderful.
Thank you, Board, for allowing us to present for these, uh, groups today. I do wanna say I, I recognized, um, uh, Susan Gaborio a few minutes ago. But these last three presentations really could not have been taking place today if Dr. Coleman had not been researching and creating our STEM initiative that she did a couple of years ago and getting the funding for these programs in our district. So I wanna thank her as well, because these last three presentations could not be done without her.
There's money out there to find. She, she'll find it, so, yeah, definitely.
And it kinda goes back to our workshop, the column that asks, "What are we doing here? What are we offering?" And, and it's things like this that says, "We're on the right trail."
These students will be, uh, leading the way in a few years and you'll be very proud. Thank you again, Mr. Knutson.
Just keep my social security check coming. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Mary, see you.
Good seeing you.
Bye-bye.
Appreciate everything you're doing, okay?
I did enjoy Erin. She was over there trying to catch that little yellow ball in her mouth. It was so funny.
Okay, at this time, we are going to have our 2020 Product of Putnam Update by Mrs. Felicia Kayhan.
I think Felicia said she's gonna sing to us today.
It's hard to follow that group.
She was joking with me. I thought I'd call her out on it.
Hello, Board. Um, it is that time of year again to bring out the Product of Putnam Award. Um, we started that last year in an effort to recognize people that graduated from our school district and then still give back to our county. They either work here, live here, volunteer in some way. So, we are bringing that back. Over the next two weeks, you'll probably hear us start promoting that, um, through radio, our social media, Facebook. our social media, Facebook. I'll probably send out an email and ask that any event that you guys attend, that you help promote that as well. This year, the application will be completely online. We're going to have a QR code that'll more easily allow people to access that. Everybody has a smartphone almost, so you just scan that code, brings you right up to the application, then you can submit your nominee. So over the next two weeks, we're going to promote. Then it'll be open for nominations to be sent in for about five to six weeks. We will then close that, we'll go over the applicants, we're going to verify everybody, make sure everything's good. Then we'll be taking those names to the chamber, they'll be voting on them, and then we'll be bringing that to you guys to announce the winners at, I believe it's a May 19th board meeting? And then we'll have that in time for them to be recognized at graduation, and then we'll bring them into a board meeting to formally give them a nice plaque and really hear their stories of what they've done in the county. But I just wanted to go ahead and let you guys know that that is very soon on the horizon.
I've noticed the plaque and the, the big plaque in the hallway is actually for the Product of Putnam, and we already have last year's winners, so this year's winners will also be included in that.
I was trying to figure out how Charlie Douglas got into that. Is there no criteria, no qualifying? I was not on that. Just kidding, Charlie.
I appreciate Felicia taking the lead in that, and she's also working with the chamber and the Placa Daily News as part of a steering committee, so there's a lot of work in that, but it goes along with our whole idea of trying to celebrate our own, the ones who come through our school system and really give back. So again, we're trying to really promote that. So anything you can do to help us promote it would be appreciated. Thank you, Felicia.
Okay, at this time, we will have our public comment. Each person will be given three minutes. When you come to the podium, we ask that you give your name and your address. So the first one we have, and we take them in, in the order that they come, is the subject on coronavirus. Oh, let's see. Cell phone pornography, okay? And we have fundraising, where does the money go? And this is by Mrs. Veronica Hersberger. Did I pronounce it correctly? All right, thank you so much, if you will come up.
My name is Veronica Hersberger, I live at 104 New York Avenue in Interlock in Florida. I addressed the coronavirus when they were speaking, Mr. Serensky.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the cell phones, it's not just cell phones, it's actually the Gmail addresses that are given to the, the students in the middle schools and elementarys. I have a problem with the cell phones during school years or school classes. I have a six-year-old that goes to school, I have a seven-year-old, you know, and all on up. But my, the last three years, my child, this is six-years-old, has been subjected to pornography on the bus and at school off of these cell phones. So my six-year-old's innocence has been taken due to cellphone uses at school, okay, inappropriately. The other issue that I have is I have a 13-year-old that has been doing inappropriate things as well in the elementary school, I mean, the middle school. They, I always scan my kid, children, I always put them, I've got Google Assist and everything that they get on that is, as far as the internet and things that they're able to get to, is on my phone. So if something goes that they're not supposed to be on, it pings to my phone. While he was having some issues, I found out that y'all, you know, give them all their own Gmail accounts. On this Gmail account, instead of him going into classes and doing his classes for these programs you offer, they were talking about sex through each one of these students. I tried to download that to my phone, the Gmail account, so that I could, you know, watch what he was doing at school, but because it is on a school domain, a, a school domain, I'm not able to put that on my phone. So I'm not able to watch what he's doing. I'm not a helicopter mom by any means, but when it comes to my kids schooling, what they're watching, what they're got access to, I, I have to, you know, be on that. And if I can't get that through the access from your Gmail accounts that you have offered to these children, and y'all are not able to go from student to student to student to find out what they're doing on these programs, unable to get on the email accounts and open internet, it's not just the email account itself, they're able to bypass your internet where it does not ping to your system and get on. I had five instances from one of my children, after watching porn at school, go onto iReady, and instead of going to iReady, were able to get on porn at school, watching the computer, on the computer, while she was in the class with the rest of her student, the students. That was called on me, that it went, they were called saying, okay, she was on the live internet, but it does not scramble it, you're not able, there's nothing to scramble, live internet to protect these children. It was one of the deans from the elementary.
The school found out that your child was accessing pornography at school.
Yes. Yes, so they, they were able to ping through the school.
Yes, ma'am.
But they weren't able to stop them from getting on it. Do you see what I'm saying? So she's actually got on five times to watch this, okay, and to do this. This isn't my six-year-old, this is one of my older, older children, they're 10, and my 13-year-old as well in the elementary, in the middle school. This is, I've addressed it with the bus drivers, I have addressed it with the bus garage, I have addressed it with the school board, I've addressed it with the, the principal, as far as going, as far as the porn and what's going on with the cell phones. I don't want to have to pull my kid out of school, but in order to protect my children, what do I do? And what do other students, children, what parents do for their children as far as the cellphone use in school? Is there a way there, the internet can be scrambled as they get on into the school so that they cannot access the internet but still have access to their phone if they need it, as to call their parent that there's some emergency, but where they cannot get on that internet whatsoever unless it goes straight to the parent's phone?
Madam Chair, can I?
You got to address it, because I don't understand.
I'd like to have our IT department reach out to you, and let's work on it that way. And this is the first time I've heard this, so.
Oh, it happens daily.
Is that Price Middle School and?
This is Interlock Elementary, Interlock and Middle, and Interlock and High, they're old enough, you know, but by the time I was 20-year-old, my six-year-old knows more than I did about porn at the age of 20.
Well, we, we will have our IT, we've got your number, I think, on the sheet. We'll have our IT department contact you directly. And we, we will work through that.
All right.
Appreciate you making that up.
Hold on, I don't, I don't, I don't have.
Do we have your phone?
I don't have the phone number.
Yeah, would you put it on there, and that way we'll have them call you? Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll definitely address that.
You know, if kids can, they will. I mean, they're going to look at stuff they shouldn't, and anytime they can find a, a crack in a firewall, they're going to look at things they shouldn't.
They're much smarter than. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So frightening.
And the second one, Ms. Hersberger, is your cell? Okay. Thank you again. All right, now, Ms. Andy Burnett will be addressing the health insurance plan recommendations.
Good afternoon, Board. Andy Burnett, ESC Director and Chair of the Insurance Committee. Back, the board met on November 8, 2019, and approved our current insurance plans of CDNE. At that time, there took place some discussion on having only HSA plans, that recommendation was brought before you. The concerns that you had, that you were worried some of the plans would prefer having a Plan C, a PPO plan, and then there was also some concerns about the time it would take to educate employees if we only went to a system that had HSAs. The Insurance Committee met on February 19th, and it was unanimous decision to want to revisit looking at having only HSA plans again. That's why we're requesting to have a board workshop, because we're sure you have some questions about it or suggestions, or might have things that you want us to go back and research. So that's why I'm coming before you, is to request a board workshop on this subject. And like I said, it was unanimous decision for admin and three union representatives, and we all are in agreeance, this is what we'd like to discuss with you.
It's time-sensitive, Andy.
Well, no, sure, we have, you know, we're, we're sitting here in March, and of course, this would be, we would be looking at for a 2021.
I just was going to say, we'd go ahead and ask the superintendent to try to set something up and just let us know.
We do have, our next meeting, by the way, is a night meeting, and we could actually have it prior to that night meeting. If you, you don't have any objection to that?
That will be fine.
That's April.
Is it going to be a night meeting here or in the outline here?
It's here.
Here, okay.
It's a six o'clock meeting, we could have it at whatever your preference is, Madam Chair, 4:30, 5, whatever.
You, you think?
How much time do you think you need?
An hour, hour and a half, how much time you would need, Mr. Burnett?
I believe an hour. Mark, would you think more than an hour, hour would be sufficient?
Okay.
What if we did 4:30, and that, that would give us a, a good hour, and then we'd have time to transition to our.
That would be fine.
To the board meeting.
If we can't resolve it in that period of time, at least we can get an idea of.
The 19th, I think he said, April?
No, no, it's.
Late April 7.
Oh, where did I get 19th from? Oh, I think you meant February 19th.
You know what, I'm sorry. The next, yeah, yeah, we only have one meeting in March, so it is April 7th, is our next meeting. Because we, we only have one meeting this month, so it is April 7th.
Yeah, that's the six o'clock one, yes. And then the 21st, okay.
All right, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. All right, made myself a note. Okay, if there are some more public comments, pass those to Dr. We are now ready for the consent agenda. We're going to start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I don't have anything to pull.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Mr. Buckles, good. Mr. McInnis?
I have nothing to pull.
All right, and Mrs. Crawford?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm not pulling item number six, I'm just saying it is awesome, positively Putnam, Florida. I think that is fantastic. Okay, so do we get a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt or approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been a motion by Mr. Buckles that we approve the consent agenda as it has been written, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. We are now in emergency session. First item, after the fact overnight travel, Palaca High School Wrestling Team to Kissimmee, Florida, March 5th through 7th, 2020, justification explanation, time-sensitive.
Can I make a motion, we approve?
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles that we accept, and second by Mrs. Pickens that we approve it. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Item number two, after the fact overnight travel, Palaca High School Anchor Club to Kissimmee, Florida, March 6th through 8th, 2020, justification explanation, time-sensitive.
I make a motion that we approve.
A second.
All right, it's been motion by Mrs. Crawford that we approve it, second by Mr. McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Final emergency item number three, after the fact out-of-state travel, mental health counselor to Arlington, Virginia, Mar, I mean, yes, March 9th through the 12th, 2020, justification explanation, item received March 9th, 2020.
I make a motion that we approve.
I second it.
Motion to approve it by Mrs. Holly Pickens, second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. We are now out of emergency session. We have no unfinished business, and we have no new business. So at this time, we will entertain our reports from our board members, our superintendent, and our attorney. We will start with you, Mrs. Crawford, and move to your left.
Okay, I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention. I had the pleasure of reading in Ms. Amanda Wenders' class at Mosley, and that was a wonderful, wonderful time. The kids were so receptive and enjoyed us being there. I also attended the Eddie Mooney ARC fundraiser last, I believe it was last week. It was such a wonderful event, and I think this is the biggest crowd they've had in, in years. But what was, one of the things that was so special about this year's event was that Palaca High School's JFG group won the Volunteer of the Year Award. It usually only goes to one person, and this year, that group was chosen, and it was such a surprise to them, and it was just great. Holly and I participated in the Girls Can Event at St. John's River State College last Friday. It, it seemed like to me it was the biggest event that they've had so far. The girls from our three high schools were so well-behaved and so attentive, the whole, the whole time I saw them anyway. And it was a wonderful opportunity for them to see, see and hear from women who are successful in their, in a variety of fields. And it's, the college really puts in a lot of work on this, this event. Spring break is coming up, I know everyone is thrilled, especially our teachers. I hope everyone has a wonderful time and is very safe. And the fair, I hope we can have it. You know, that's, that's a big event in Putnam County. You know, our kids put in so much work for the animals that they show and the projects that they're involved in. I hope that we are able to have it and that everybody can go out and support these kids. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. McInnis? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just a reminder, Jane asked me what this bag's for. You need to go buy a Feed the Need bag, five, they're at Winn-Dixie, and all the proceeds go to Feed the Need. Isn't that right, Renee?
A certain percentage, I can't remember.
I think it's 20.
Oh, they did, yeah.
20 or 10%.
That's right, they do get a good percentage.
Or you can go online and make a donation to Feed the Need.
Thank you. And they're, they're really nice bags, I mean, they're, they're nice. Do you want a bag?
It wouldn't hold all the groceries I buy.
And I did.
But thank you.
Did enjoy reading at Mosley with the African-American Read-In. Want to congratulate the Lady Rams softball team, I caught them with PK Young and then with Coach Whitehurst, congratulations to him, and I was glad to see the robotics teams, all of them today. I was actually in contact with one of the parents at the Melrose Elementary School, so they were giving me feedback since I wasn't up there about how well they were doing, and they're very proud about their standing and how well they, how much they've accomplished. I did catch the Rams at Crescent City High School baseball game, and I challenged any pool pork dinner, could be beat, the Palaca High School dugout club last Friday, it was amazing. It's enough for me to eat probably four meals with two plates, it was amazing. Attended the pickleball dedication, and it was a big turnout, and it's going to be huge, I know, with as much as our community's involved in pickleball and that we're bringing in the schools, when Ms. Simons came in to show us that, I was just, I thought that was just the best thing since sliced bread for our, for our schools right now. We, some of us were in the Isaiah Festival Parade and my dog's debut, so joy was in there.
Yes, joy was the start of the show.
Pictures. I attended sadly two expulsion hearings already this month, and one thing I keep getting out of this over and over is we're at a point right now where our schools are, and our teachers are doing everything that they can possibly do, but our parents and family members and friends need to have some meaningful conversations with their children about what's important in school, as bullying, guns, and just. As bullying, guns and just general discipline about being respectable, respectful for each and every individual. I think, I think the kids have got it. It's, we're just need to get the word out that the parents, the kids need to talk to their parents about it's bad when the parents have to have the kids talk to them about when things are bad, but that's my observation. And I wrote a note here and I can't read it.
Yeah, you need glasses?
No.
Oh.
I want to commend, I can't name how many students that I've seen on social media that are coming back and assisting in the classroom and it just, just saw, it just is, you know, it's confirmation of what our teachers do, making that connection and those relationships that our students are not even being solicited to come back. They want to come back and they want to give back to their fellow classmates that they've already graduated and they're, they're gone. There's just too many to tell you how many do that right now. And lastly, back with the expulsion hearing and I won't bore you with this, but I want to commend our staff. I just witnessed, they, they go above and beyond to meet the needs of every student and they will extend the educational services to that point for a child that has done something really, made a really bad mistake and they made a bad choice at the right time, but our, our people here, they don't want to lose them regardless. And I just, to me, that says so much about Putnam County. I'm proud of it.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Mr. Buckles?
I think Jane wanted to say something real quick.
I forgot to mention that Palatka High School Girls Softball won the tournament, the county tournament.
And both boys.
I didn't go to that. I went to the other one.
I see Jane.
But that didn't take away the fact that they won it, right?
Jane just took my report away.
Well, you got more than that.
I'm kidding.
Okay, well, good. I'm glad you're gonna talk about it.
I was gonna, you know, mention how, how needed it was to, you know, to watch the tournament the other day and I go back to when that was a cow pasture and, and we had title nine problems years ago and we were able to acquire it and build a girls softball field there and where it's come in all these years, it's just.
Yeah, and all the work Kurt Smith.
Yeah, Kurt and then Ryan Offord, Randy.
Williams and.
Randy, Randy.
Randy Headstrom, absolutely.
If those palm trees are planted crooked, Randy did it.
Well, Karen brought that up Saturday. She said, somebody said something about, don't ask about where the palm trees came from, so she didn't.
I know where, I know where they came from. Anyway, I, I wanted to commend Ms. Bernie. She's not here, but the workshop today I thought was excellent.
Yes.
I'm a, I'm a firm, I'm a firm believer in systemic approaches to a problem and not just a Band-Aid. I mean, you can stick a Band-Aid, but you better be working on the, the root causes that go along with it. But the fact that she took you, Ms. Crawford, with your knowledge of guidance and you, all of you were working together to make this presentation and the workshop makes me feel good. Makes my heart warm and fuzzy because, because that's, that's what we're about. Teaching and learning. It's, and it has to be systemic. It has to be, you know, as we talked in the workshop, you've got so many things that, that we know that give us an advantage about our students is just trying to find the right fit, the right recommendation from the Superintendent to make the decisions together that will benefit the children in the long run. And I, I can't say enough on how much I thought that was, other than I'm losing my voice. But I was, I am a little concerned on the, the overt response to the coronavirus. I mean, it, it may, it may become bigger, but I've seen viruses before, but I've never seen in, in swine flu and things like that. But I've never seen the furor like there is around the country, you know, it just. I talked to a doctor yesterday that told me we had flus and viruses in Putnam County that are a lot worse than Corona, so. You know, it's like the Superintendent said, if you're sick or, or even feeling bad, let them know at school or maybe stay home. That's, that's all I can say. I'm optimistic that it won't be as bad as it's being projected, but I mean, I feel so good that we've got Thomas on the phone right now and, and the stuff you got going, Rick, I feel pretty good about it. So we'll see where it goes.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. All right, Mrs. Pickens?
Okay, well, when you're last, there's, people have mentioned a lot of things already.
Yeah, a lot of mine.
Um, I did have the opportunity to moderate for the One Book One Putnam at the Bostwick Library at the end of February. And I really loved the book, you know, and, and, but I, I met a lot of really neat people and it was, it was a really good experience and I'm looking forward to going tonight at 5:30 to the conclusion of the, where the crowd had sing at the Palatka Library.
Oh, okay. You'll get there, okay.
Yeah, it's, I will.
At the time.
And I've been helping with the retakes for FSA. They had Algebra I yesterday and boy, you know, math is just really difficult. And so I really prayed hard for those kids yesterday while I was walking around proctoring.
No prayer in school.
I, it was all to myself. And, and then I got an opportunity to attend a training at Middleton Bernie, so now I can go in and help at the elementary level, so I'm excited about that. I love to be able to get into the schools. One really, really neat thing, flag football. First year at Crescent City High School, I went to the first game. It was against Pearson Taylor, which is our, our rival in every sport. And the neatest thing was Jordan Williams, who's probably wasn't here because she probably had flag football practice or a game. She scored the first touchdown history-making and they won the game, but I thought how appropriate. It was an interception. She ran a good long ways. I coached her for a few years. I didn't know she was that fast. But she, I thought it was really appropriate because her dad, Pooh Bear, you know, scored many touchdowns for Crescent City High School and I thought that was really cool that she, she did get to score. The Girls Can was fabulous. I, I learned that I want to make myself available to help more next year and Ms. Crawford said she'd give me the hookup for that, so that's good. This morning, I went to coffee with the principal, Mr. Adams at Miller Middle and there were some community people there, but no parents. And, you know, this, this whole idea was to increase parent involvement and it seems to me they're doing everything they can. If you, if you look on the back of the Courier Journal, the whole back page is Crescent City High School, what's happening, Miller, what's happening. And so they're trying to get the word out, but somehow we've just got to figure out how to really make the connection with the parents and the time that fits, you know, I think we were doing evenings, afternoons, that didn't work, so they went back to the morning. But the positive thing is you get to really hear about Miller and all that they're doing. And they also have family nights now and, and that wasn't well attended. So, you know, we just have to find a way to work and get those parents and, and keep trying new things, which I commend them for trying to do the new things and so hopefully it'll work eventually. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Real quick, because of time, we want to get you out. Positively Putnam. I've read it. I get it and I'm gonna present this to my sorority on Saturday because we want to get in on this because that's, this is basically what we do. We do mentor 21 5th grade girls at Mellon Elementary and hopefully what we're doing is making a difference. We have invited five of them, four or five of them and along with Mrs. Weaver, they will be a part of our scholarship brunch at Palatka High on the 21st because what we want to do is not just talk to them about school and behavior, but we want to see, let them see how it happens in the public. Wanted to mention Road by Palatka High. I always read Marquis and they had their Malik Buford being their Student of the Month. I thought that was a neat thing because generally we think of athletes as those guys and girls that are popular around campus, but they are above the law, so to speak, but to see this gentle giant walk and I just thought that was great. I did get an opportunity to read at Mosley with, during African American History Month in Mrs. Angelita Felze's class. Had a great time. Also got to read for Dr. Seuss's birthday at James Z. Long to a 2nd grade class. Isaiah Parade, yes, we were there. People didn't notice us. They were focused on the dog. It's dogs and babies that will get people to notice you. And to Palatka Daily News, we want to thank you for the great article on the pre-K program. We mentioned that as being a foundation for our students and getting them caught up in closing that gap. You did a great job on that article and that concludes it. Mr. Attorney?
We're continuing to stay up to date on the legal aspects of what coronavirus could mean in our district and we're also continuing to work on the bridge over Etna Creek and for the families and kids who are affected, who live north of the bridge. We surely hope that DOT and the county are able to come up with a solution that will be swift. But we are continuing to monitor that as well. That's all for now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just gonna run down a few things if you don't mind, since this is our only board meeting. Probably have a couple of extra items, but congratulations to our Board Attorney for understanding they're also working for St. Augustine, so. Right, very, congratulations and, yeah, keeping an eye on St. John's County. He's the Board Attorney for St. Augustine City.
Beach.
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 You are?
Our firm was selected.
His firm, right.
Their meetings are at the same town as ours, aren't they?
Awesome.
There'll be no conflict.
Anyway, just good to see one of our own, you know, expanding over there.
Yes, most definitely.
Yesterday, I went to Project Putnam meeting.
It must've run out of people to hire over there, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, Project Putnam with Representative Yoho and, and you probably read it in the paper, but he had some great things to say about Putnam County and our progress and, you know, he said he's even talking it up to his fellow members of Congress and they're asking him, hey, what's going on in Putnam County? So I think that speaks to what our Board has done and our entire district. So they're definitely speaking positive up in Washington about Putnam County. And also, I mentioned before, but we, we have the opportunity, I have recently and this spring, myself and Jonathan Hinke are actually giving some presentations to some national audiences about Putnam County's graduation rate. I was in Los Angeles a couple of weeks ago, spoke to a group there and I think next week Jonathan is in Dallas speaking to a group.
If they have it.
Yeah, if they have it, we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed. The end of the month, I'll be in Sarasota speaking to a group of national superintendents and possibly I'll be going to Dallas in May, again, spreading the good news. So it, it's just a credit to our entire district and when the nation sees what's going on, I think that's, says a lot about what we're doing. Speaking of the nation, you saw where my trip to Finland was postponed. And of course, I was very disappointed, but there'll be an opportunity to go later, maybe when it's warmer. I have my snow clothes ready, but, but again, I, and I say this in the paper, but I feel very strong that I, I need to be here during all this with all this stuff going on and Mr. Bowlen is doing a fantastic job, but I think symbolically, I need to be on the ground here. So everything's gonna work out. Couple of items just to put on your calendar tonight at 5:30. Tag art reception, if you will, for some of our students. Ms. Linda Myers will be presenting this at the Flow Arts Auditorium. That's at 5:30. Tonight also at the Jim Pignata Theater will be the middle school band extravaganza of the middle school bands and that will be at 6:00. Thursday, the high school bands will have an extravaganza also at 6:00 at Jim Pignata Theater. So if you get a chance to come out, please do so. And I, I do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Every one of you talked about participating in some school activities or visiting. That, that speaks so strongly about our Board and that you are very concerned about what's going on, so thank you. And I think we have such a strong Board and people see that and especially when you're on the ground, I think that means a lot. So continue to do that. I really appreciate that.
I had some of your coaches ask me to go lock a few gates at the softball game, so I just thought I'd tell you, they're bossy.
They're taking advantage of you, right?
They're boss, they're boss board members around, yeah.
Last thing is this week, they should be finalizing at the legislature, they should be sending a budget to the, the budget to the Governor. We are monitoring that. I know the House and the Senate have met this week and are trying to work out the differences. I'm not, not real optimistic, but we will let you know. I'll be sending you an email and, and letting you know what the final thing is, but we're gonna do the best we can, you know, to make sure we take care of our employees.
Yes, sir.
When was the high school band thing?
Thursday night at 6:00 PM.
And the, and the middle school is tonight and all this is at Pignata, Jim Pignata Theater.
And Ms. Cormany always tries to get a county calendar.
I know, I was gonna ask about that.
And, yeah, it's on the calendar. We'll try to, as, from here until June, there'll be something going on all the time, so.
So we just click on calendar in the email?
It's, yeah, in your email, there should be a calendar. I think it's student and student's.
Yeah, it, it comes up.
Also, Mr. Bowlen, is there anything that you need to share? Any updates at all?
More of the same. Lots of discussion around travel and what different districts are doing, our policies and procedures seem to be consistent with this body of others.
Good.
The discussion has started about how we're gonna handle things with structural.
You'll be okay, bud.
And implications for graduation and the decisions need to be made sooner than later. So we're in a wait and see mode right now, but if things start to get critical and more and more schools do begin shutting down, shutting down, your decision is being made.
You will get an email, you know, we'll do that before we send out anything public and try to keep you in the loop on what's going on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Thomas. And that's all I have.
I've just never seen it generated to this degree. I mean, I.
If you were, like, would the situation, if a school had a coronavirus case and you had to shut down the school, would it just be that school and everyone else could continue to go to school?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. And again, that's what the plan is, but again, you know, there are, we met with principals and there are probably some unforeseen ripple effects that we don't even know yet.
You don't have any idea.
So we're gonna make a lot of these calls on, as they happen, but yeah, to answer your question, it would be school by school or whatever the Health Department recommends.
Any other questions? If, anything else to come before the Board? Hearing nothing. This meeting?
Thank you.